Back, I believe it was about July when we first heard about this. The main concern wasn't that, you know, we're gonna have extra trash. It was more that we have a long lengthy rail siding in the borough. And would that trash reside in the borough for any period of time? Especially in the summertime. We know that you're more than welcome to use rails and do it any manner you want. And the railroad has its own special set of rules. And our main concern was for our citizens as to if it would be a problem. So can you speak to that? I know you guys are investing heavily in your own rail siding.
You don't wanna sit in town, right?
We don't want to. We prefer.
No, we, so we are building five and a half rails. They're roughly a mile in length, adjacent to the landfill. So chances are, nothing would ever be in town here. And that's gonna say, because I don't run the railroad, that it wouldn't sit here, I'm guessing, on the empty side of it. Because it's our intention and everything will, what we were told. Flow for the rail will come out of the plo flow towards us. They will drop it in our rail yard, proceed on. And then during the day, any empties we have, they will pick them on the way back. I do know that they sit there once in a while, if their shift change happens to be then. So there is a chance that there could be empties sitting there, but.
So just try and mitigate as much as we can. And probably for a long period of time.
We've, we've expressed to them that we do not want to be bad neighbors and have empty trash trains sitting in town here. So they do know that, so I, I believe they're gonna make every effort to not have it sit here, so.
Okay, and if we do experience problems, assuming we can call, maybe we could start liming or do something and try and mitigate the smell if it does become. Well, I, I welcome, you know, glad to see extra business coming in however it comes, you know, more trash, possibly more jobs, more people out to the landfill. And that's, uh, it's been fifty years, but I'm glad you came.
Yeah, I'm gonna, you know, answer some of those concerns. Which obviously that one's a very good one.
When do you expect to be up and running?
So they're still installing all the rails, our, their work portion is done. I think that we will have half of it going probably by June. And then the full yard operational by end of year.
Now, is there gonna be the additional flow through as far as number of trains? Melanin, any changes there, something like that?
Should stay with the Monday through Friday, two runs, one southbound, one north.
All sounds good to me. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I got a question. I always look through the churches of the airport. I notice here there's water and lifesavers bought from Walmart.
Yes.
Yes.
How many ones?
Because we like water and lifesavers.
We keep water on hand for, for everybody, and the guys, obviously, especially in the summertime. And, and lifesavers, I mean, they keep us alive. It's, it's the, the mint ones that we have available. And they're always available in there for anyone who comes in. And then we, we have them for anybody, really for anybody to need them.
You buy them for about twenty years, you just never seen them when they were on the, uh, the order from Quill.
That's like a staple. But, yeah. Any else? Ben, you're.
He's more than happy to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
You're free to go as well. I, I didn't know we moved on so quickly, I was trying to make sure we were good.
I'll leave some cards here if anybody does have a question.
Oh, perfect, thank you so much.
Don, the rail's gonna be on Canton Road, right?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, what do you got?
It, uh, it doesn't. I don't care, it's on Canton Road, it was to Johnsonburg.
Is, uh, I talked to the Penn Dout rep last week, a lot of people have been writing about the condition of the road. Uh, nature was still, and Bartelle, and how to these last colors with, uh, Chit-Jock, that they did last year. Quote-unquote, did. Uh, there are no plans to do anything with that road this year, there's nothing on the offer for it. So, uh, people that have concerns about it, and I've seen more and more posts on Facebook about it. Contact yours, local state rep Marty or Priscus, contact Penn Dout and not all of them. And, uh, even Paul Clearfield can continue to write about it, the more noise we make, more, maybe they'll do something.
All right. Is that it? Do you have anything at this point, Scotty?
I'm just gonna let you know, I don't know whether this is recording or not, it keeps going from one thing to another, so you may not have a meeting this month recorded.
All right. It happens.
I mean, maybe she could send me hers, or. I don't know why, it just went through the calendar.
I mean, if it, if it doesn't work, I'll just let it be. It's still being recorded, so it'll be all right. Okay, so that ends the public discussion. We're gonna move on to Mayor's report. She is not here, but she did send it. I'm gonna go ahead and read it, since she is presenting her way, that way everyone knows what she has to say. Um, she says, "I hope you've all had a nice February so far. I apologize, that won't be at this evening's meeting, as I'll be traveling, but wanted to send my report. First of all, I want to express my opposition to the energy initiative resolution that will be considered. As a community that has been built around the traditional energy industry, I feel that this resolution is a bit tone deaf and out of line with the actual concerns of our community. We turn to the oil and gas, trucking, logging, and other related businesses in our community for their donations, help with equipment, and helping hands on a very regular basis. We rely on the extremely generous support of businesses that are directly involved with the fossil fuel industry to help fund our emergency services and community projects. And to pass a resolution encouraging divestment from these businesses which directly support our region's economy is frankly quite insulting to them. Furthermore, when it comes to the solar project that Frank's applied a grant for, have we considered that the borough building and the library were both built in the nineteen sixties? They are not retrofitted to accommodate these kinds of systems, and will ultimately require maintenance from borough employees that I feel creates a liability. If someone falls off the roof while servicing these panels, I would imagine our insurance rents might be negatively impacted among other things. To think that having solar panels or other energy efficiency measures will actually add value or save taxpayer dollars, seems like a great ideal in theory, but in reality, throwing money, grant funds, or otherwise at a non-existent problem is not a benefit to taxpayers, in my opinion. I know there have been various savings models included as part of the research used in preparation for the grant, but I imagine that these are models used for sales pitching from the solar panel installers and not actually guaranteeing projections. I appreciate the idea of working with the Westpac Sustainability Fund, but I do wonder if it's worth considering a project with their support that might not come with such a liability as solar panels atop a sixty-plus-year-old building, that isn't particularly retrofitted for that kind of project. As for other updates, I will work with Lisa Davis to prepare the favors for the McLaughlin dinner and get them to whoever, or bring them whenever we set up for the dinner. Please let me know if additional help is needed, happy to help. Chuck and I discussed reaching out to the Sister City Project, and I've contacted them for additional information that we can share with the larger group, so. That touches on a few things we'll get to later on in the meeting. Obviously, McLaughlin is just around the corner, so everything's just being finalized for that. That'll happen before we meet, but as far as anything else she has here, um, it's on the agenda to discuss later. So with that, I would, uh, accept a motion to accept that.
Well. I have a couple of.
Okay, man, Chris.
Statements.
Who seconded it?
Tom.
Me. They were neck and neck, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, she says if someone falls off the roof while servicing these solar panels, who's gonna service the solar panels? That's my thought. Are they qualified? No, so they won't even be on the roof. The only people that would be actually beyond the roof would be the contractors who have their own insurance. So that's kind of a null statement. And a statement of it won't save dollars? If you're producing your own electricity, and it amounts to the amount of electricity, well, actually ninety-seven percent of the electricity you use within the borough. That's money you won't be paying. That's a savings. It actually seems to me that this is more of a feelings.
Well, she put in my opinion, this is her opinion.
It's more of a feelings, and I'm not really, in my opinion, not looking for a feelings-generated opposition. If you have facts, great, but if you don't have facts, I mean, we're dealing with people that have dot edu at the end of their email. I think they know a little bit more than we do.
Well, I wasn't trying to dismiss discussion on this.
I know.
My point was that it is under old business, and we will get to it.
Yes.
So we can keep this handy. And, and you've raised your, your points already, but, uh, we can get into it a little bit more at that point. Um, we do have a motion for a second, President Tom. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to maintenance report, which should be in effect.
I'll second.
Chris makes a motion, Frank seconds, can second maintenance report, all those in favor?
Who's motion?
Chris, Chris? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll take a look at the Borough Manager Report. Anything, uh, Ms. Barbara?
Um, I contacted, uh, the people that were on the zoning hearing board. Brad Paulson and Tony DCO have responded back, and they wanna remain on it. I have not heard anything from Dorrit McPraken, so I imagine we'll probably have to find one person before I can reach out again, it's up to you guys.
How long ago did you reach out?
Right after our meeting.
Oh, that's a long time.
Will, you were on council for a million years, you wanna be on zoning hearing board? Come on! We've all used him, uh, never since I've been on the board.
I mean, if you desperately need somebody.
At least you are familiar with the rules.
Yeah.
Sounds like he has.
So do you want Will?
Only if Will is actually saying yes.
Well, okay.
I'll take the motion.
Well, that was my secondary concern, but I forgot to let you voice that. Do you make a motion to put Will?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Chris seconds the motion, all of you favor adding Will, uh, to the zoning hearing board? Say aye. Any opposed? Hey, congratulations, Will, don't tell back.
Just when you thought you were out, dragged you back, yeah.
But hopefully we'll continue to never need you.
Um, the green grants, the green waste grant that we submitted in December, um, to the Planning Commission and the Commissioners was approved. Um, it was for thirty-two thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and it was to finish out the match for our park. Um, so with that, and the ARPA funds that are left that need to be spent by the end of the year, we will have enough, so we don't have to worry about taking any money out of the. Good job, Bart.
Good job, Bart.
Statewide tax recovery, uh, they collect our occupational and our per capita delinquent taxes. They have joined with Burkheimer, Burkheimer, and have become statewide tax innovations. So I have two resolutions to pass tonight. Um, they just say that they changed their name, and that we're in agreement to have them collect these taxes. This costs us nothing. Whoever's late, they pay the fees for being late. And then they also, I put all that with your stuff. The fee agreements are there also, okay?
Is this a change of any kind?
Pardon me?
Like the fee agreements and all that, is it?
The fees have gone up, but like I said, that doesn't cost us anything. It's the people who are late on their taxes that pay those. Okay, um, the DMH to the decorative streetlights, um, has been submitted to the Enchant, and is covered. Um, there will be a five hundred dollar deductible. Everything for the McLaughlins ready, I let Lisa know, uh, what the choices were. Everything's been sent to the burrows. Uh, Chris has talked to Cafe Soul and Lick and Slip, Lick and Sit to purchase baskets from each place to support local businesses. Chuck is also donating a hat and a gift card. Um, we're going to give away the centerpieces for door prizes, and then we'll also have the ornaments, um, from the Swedish festival. And I've spoken to Jane from Run Hill Delios for the centerpieces. And then I've just sent several letters regarding snow removal, snow removal and parking issue this month for. Oh, and the house on, it's not on there, the house on Anderson Street that Dave O'Grillen bought, uh, it was demolished today.
I'd like to make a motion to pass both resolutions for Burkheimer and the statewide delinquent tax collector.
I'll second those.
Brett makes the motion for a second. Any other thing? All right, all of you favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also make a motion to approve the manager's report.
I'll second.
Brett makes the motion, Frank seconds, approve the manager's report, all of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take a look for minutes, if you don't have any concerns, we will stand as presented, and move on to looking at the treasurer's reports.
I'll make a motion to pass the treasurer's report and the payment of bills.
Second that.
Chris makes a motion, Brett seconds, for treasurer's report, payment of bills. All of you in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the committee reports, streets and buildings.
Uh, as far as, I know, just he had in his report as far as snow removal along the parking lane and stuff, I asked him there where his, the snow recided and, you know, uh, to move it out, so like churches and stuff, I have places that people can park. Get off the street enough, not being out in the rain, so through there, so they, they worked on that. It's difficult, people think that they can do this within a matter of a couple hours, but, you know, stopping, pulling in the daytime when there's traffic and stuff to try to, you know, run that back, go back and forth, and, uh, places to, to dump it, you know, is a difficult thing too. Because some places they gotta run, for, you know, distance to dump it, so that slows you down. And he had in his report as far as putting the globe back on the one street lane that was, uh, broken, but, uh. Do you know, Brett, when we, wasn't there supposed to be extra?
Yes.
Streetlights or bulk loads and different things?
Yeah, we're gonna reach out to Penn Dout about, uh, it's supposed to be a couple different replacement things that were never furnished, and, uh, we'll definitely get those kinda.
That made me think when he had repaired that one. As far as, I think Tom's just been waiting for a decent day to try to get on some of this stuff, uh. Working on the lights, or did he ever get the?
Yeah. So Tom bought the fuses and bought the surge arrestors, the surge arrestors were installed, the fuses were installed. When it goes up from the surge restor, it goes to a, what do you call it, an LED driver, and it's a programmable driver, and he threw a lot of electrical jargon at it, but, uh, apparently they come in at a thousand, I believe, milliamps. I don't know, and they're supposed to be at three hundred, so they need to be reprogrammed. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that these ones are bad, it could just be that they need to be reprogrammed, or they could be bad. So he's talked about sending them to the factory, getting, taking care of them, is there a hundred and fifty dollars apiece? So that would be three thousand, because we have twenty of them. Also, he's talked about the potential of having them send us the software so that we can do it, and putting it on the borough computer, which I think would be best. But to get them working, there's one done, and I'd like to have them on our computer so that, you know, Tom retires, Tom loses ways on that, and we have it so that anybody can deal with it. But we're looking into it right now. He bought a new one, the new one won't work because it's not programmed, so it has to be programmed. So we're working towards that end, Barb had it in her report that it's only gonna cost us five hundred dollars because our insurance is gonna cover it for the medical, so I'm glad to hear that. Because we're already at five grand, and that's without Tommy's hourly rate.
Well, where, I mean, as far as these lights, uh, a company that did the work and stuff, you know, there's no way to reach out to, to them to try to get them to?
That's possible.
I know Tom said he's having a difficult time getting any information from.
Well, when I left talking with Tom last night, he had talked to a person with the company and was giving the information that he needed. Now, if he needs me to reach out to M and B Contracting and their electrical guy, I can definitely do that because I have the contacts. I'll talk to Tom tomorrow and see where he's at with it. I don't wanna step on his toes.
All right.
Hopefully, we'll have it done here shortly. I do have something that borders on personnel and the maintenance, so I don't know if you want me to do it now, or you want me to do it in personnel.
Um, I guess since you have the floor, keep it.
So we had an incident last week where one of our borough employees was harassed and threatened with physical violence in the work truck after plowing behind the borough building. I went to the gentleman's house, he didn't answer, probably a good thing, because I wasn't in the best moods. Barbara had sent a letter to the gentleman, the problem arose when Rick was plowing a section of road, the gentleman was plowing out in the four-wheeler, and leaving all the snow right in the middle of the driving lane. And Rick went down and came back up, it's a wide street, so we did it twice, and every time there was a pile of snow, and it has been every time. It was last Sunday, we had that extremely heavy sloppy snow. First off, it's a safety hazard, you're not allowed to leave, it, it's a state law, you can't leave debris, snow, what have you, in the driving lane. And Rick has talked to the state police, and they will be cited next time it happens, no offense or buts. The fact that the gentleman pulled his four-wheeler across the road, yelled at Rick, that's one thing, you deal with it. The fact that he followed him to the borough building to continue the argument, and pulled back on him, and was threatening to strike him in the vehicle is something else. Um, had it not been for one of the neighbors here, I believe Rick would have been assaulted. It can't be tolerated, and it won't be tolerated, and the authorities will be called next time, they should have been called this time. Rick was shook, was upset, and I get it, uh, he chose not to call the state police the next day because it would just, it'd be something he'd have to deal with, go to court. And no, basically no harm, no foul on it, other than him being very upset. Like I say, this won't be tolerated, uh, ever again. So that individual hopefully gets the letter and realizes there are other ways, people make mistakes, but can't happen. Our guys work hard, especially in those days, and for something like that, they know better.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, they, they need to feel safe in their workplace.
Absolutely.
So I agree, no, zero tolerance on that.
So, that's, uh, that's all I got.
All right, Tom, you done? Find it, some insurance?
Um, not too much, um, we're thinking about, uh, maybe getting a, hope for a new auditor next year just to see how the prices fall. I understand they're hands and company, right, so they break this year a little bit, so we might go out and try to get some more from prices for next year. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Chuck, can you hear us?
Yes.
Uh, you're up, personnel.
Okay, I, I spoke with all three, uh, with the person, uh, employees, uh, for the most part, from a personnel perspective, things are good. Uh, to kind of go along with the incident that Brett referred to, we had another situation a couple of weeks ago with another snowfall. And I was approached by a Main Street individual who was questioning, uh, a snow removal, uh, policy. And I, I told him what I thought it was, but I, I wanted to follow up, and I did with Barb, and what I thought was the case, uh, was the situation. And I asked Barb if we could tweak that a little bit, and, and she spoke with Rick and, and said we could. So I, I went back to the individual and told him that, you know, we were going to make a slight adjustment. And, uh, I followed it up with, uh, with that individual last Wednesday, I think it was, and, uh, and, uh, this individual was very pleased. Uh, he thanked me for, uh, looking into the matter, and, uh, unlike the situation Brett talked about, this individual, uh, was civil and profesi-, you know, just very courteous, and, uh. I think should happen, uh, it doesn't take yelling and screaming and threats, uh, like, like what happened in the other situation, that's just uncalled for, and I agree with Brett, we will not tolerate that. But, but the one, uh, the one on Main Street, uh, we were able to take care of that, and, uh, the maintenance guys, uh, stepped up and, and adjusted their format just a little bit. Other than that, I don't have anything, thank you very much.
Thank you. The best recommendation, if anybody has concerns, anybody watching, whatever, is, uh, we'll see this. Uh, if you have concerns about snow removal, um, give a call down in the building, or come down and talk to Barb nicely, and, uh, we'll, we'll do what we can. And we're, we're doing this for the community, so these guys aren't out here trying to make anybody's life harder, uh, they're working hard, so, um. That'd be my recommendation, instead of causing a scene because you're upset. Okay. Moving on to community development, planning and parks.
Oh, Mark, we have the five-year plan.
Can I get a copy of that?
I probably have one laying around.
I'd like to have a copy of it, just so I can see where.
I know it was emailed out several times.
It probably was, but I'd still like a copy.
I'll have to look for it. And we have the quotes, like you asked for, for the different things with the project. Till we have money, there's not much to do.
Well, we're wrapping up that project, which will free up, free up the ability to see what else is out there. This year, we break around, but it's great, so.
Yes.
All right, now, you have them for that?
Yeah, I think I'll leave the, the other things till we get to.
All right, fire department.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, your NIM classes have been, uh, scheduled, which you already know about that one, but, uh.
They're long.
Huh?
They're long.
They're long, yes. There's two NIM classes scheduled, NIM's three hundred and NIM's four hundred. Your three hundred is a twenty-four hour class, it starts Friday, six o'clock, and, uh, Sunday at about eight, eighteen hundred hours. And, uh, there's, they're over three days. There's four, ten, and ten on the hours on them three days, and your NIM's class, your four hundred series is, uh, two days, it's a Saturday and Sunday weekend course, they're two eight hours. That'll be, uh, starts at eight o'clock in the morning, goes to seventeen hundred. And your NIM's three hundred is, uh, from four twelve twenty-four to four fourteen twenty-four. And your NIM's four hundred is five twenty-five to five twenty-six. These classes are basically open to anybody in the public, or, you know, or whoever. Not just the party partner of the borough or whoever, it's just open to everybody. So if there's other people in the burrows around and wanna take these classes, they're more than welcome to.
What were the dates again?
Uh, your NIM's three hundred is four twelve, four thirteen, and four fourteen of twenty-four. And your NIM's four hundred is five twenty-five and five twenty-six of twenty-four.
Is it online, or are they on site?
Uh-huh.
Online or on site?
Uh, they will be at square one. I hate the online stuff, because every time I try to do something, the computer don't get along, so.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
So, it'll be, uh, it'll be at Fire Hall.
Pretty sure I have that to the living house.
Rick Rogan will be our instructor for the both classes. And that's what, uh, Mayor was asking about, you know, trying to get these NIM classes set up. So, they're set up, we'll get in hold of, uh, county and have them set out across the wire there, and see if any of the party departments around, uh, wanna join in too. The more tickets, the more you get, the smarter it is. And I have a couple, we had some issues with, uh, the squad. We lost our oil core, put a whole bunch of, uh, antifreeze into our oil system. We had to have emergency repaired, which cost twenty-eight hundred and seventy dollars just for the squad to be repaired. That happened. Uh, just beginning of January last month, we run two structural fires right in a row, come back, and wasn't good. So, it wasn't really something that I could come down here and ask if we could, you know, get it done, it had to be done immediately. That was an emergency situation. And then we had to replace the batteries in the, uh, engine. Had to have all four of them, because you walked in the ba- in the hall, it smelled of rotten eggs. The batteries in the engine were frying. So, I guess what I'm asking is if the borough could help us out with these bills. Cause it's, what is it, two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and seven cents for the squad, and, uh, eight hundred and six eleven for the engine.
We would just have an emergency fund for the fire department, because I don't know when it got taken out, but it was... Seemed to get pilfered any time. There was the slightest inconvenience, but, for something like that, I'm pretty sure we can find some fundings for it. So, you're looking for...
Oh, yeah, you're gonna do make good math, aren't you?
Just tell me what you're...
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Thirty-six, are you?
Thirty-seven, almost.
Thirty-seven, okay. Does both of these go to Fleet Pride? Big dogs, there's only everybody knows who's big dogs. My next question is, do you want the fire department to just pay for it, pay the bill, then the borough can reimburse us for that? Though if Fleet Pride's not...
I would say yes, because you're gonna have to look at your budget and see where you're taking that money from.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna probably need to find it. So, yeah.
Right, question?
For the sake of the fire department, I would say pay it first. Yes, Chuck?
Are we, are we still allocating the two thousand dollar a year emergency budget?
It hasn't, it hasn't been put in in a while.
Okay, alright. Uh, in, in my opinion, if we were to help, it would, it should probably be, come out of their budget to pay the bill, and then we would make the, uh, contribution to the fire department accordingly, in whatever amount we were able to do. And if we're able to do all of it or part of it, uh, but, but they should pay it out of their account.
I'd say we take it out of the plague it account when they pay the bill and bring it in. There's sixty-six thousand dollars in there, we'll be replenishing the twenty-seven we had to take, uh, when we get our tax dollars back in. It's basically a savings account that covers five percent interest.
I agree with that.
Do we wanna make that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion, read it.
Alright, we have a motion to reimburse fire department the thirty-six hundred, whatever the total exact amount is, after they pay it, from, from the plague it account. Motion by Brett, second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll get with John and Arlen, I'm real quick here.
Okay, um, can you get me a copy of both of those invoices, too?
I can have your copy right after we get that, okay? And, only one other thing. When you, when, when they're plowing, they like to plow down gallop into the upward parking lot where we come in by the garage. They leave it lay right there in front of the, uh, when you come into the top parking lot. Can they plow up the hill instead of down? Because when you come around it, that's hard to get into the, uh, in our upper driveway. I pushed it out of there and pushed it up by the building.
I don't even know if they plow down, I don't know if it's gonna make you, now, are they actually plowing in and pushing it up against the building, or are they just going by the end of the road?
No, they're stopping it right there at the end of the road.
Okay.
When, when they come in by the door, by the one door, they're stopping.
Under, under the building.
Under the building.
Okay, I'll talk to John about it.
See if they can just push it up the hill, or...
Yeah, no problem.
Even if they push it into the, you know, where we push.
Yeah, because somebody's at Howard's house now, so...
Right.
Yeah, I'll talk to them about it.
Alright, that's all. I'm good.
The only other thing for the fire department that we talked about, that, that we're gonna have to get involved with, is probably we're gonna do a logistical... We're gonna have to do like a work session with some of us and some of them about the signs, uh, the number signs. Um, because we're gonna need to figure out, really, all of how we're gonna implement this, the strategy for everything. And then, rather than take a whole meeting here or a whole meeting there, um, so, anybody here who's interested in being a part of that, let me know. We, obviously, would like to probably start figuring out the plan while it's winter, so that come the spring, we can start rolling these things out. Okay? Um, that's all you have, Scott?
That's all I have, actually.
Alright, Sur.
About library, they exist.
I skipped it accidentally.
I see that.
Library.
Well, Barb, you're...
Well, um... We're keeping it open as much as we can with the volunteers we have. Um, there's been an advertisement put out for a library. Um, we have redone our bylaws, um, a budget has been developed. The library directors, um, what they need to do, along with the board of directors, um, is all laid out now. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
And the, uh, applications are due this month, so that...
Remember, not yet.
Should continue moving forward. Thank you for that, Barb. Now, Sur.
Go plow them downhill. It's exciting, and dope.
Uh, has there been anything with code enforcement in the past month?
Um, Brett and I just had a real quick conversation the other day with Barb, when I happened to be down here. We wanna tighten up next year, um, the parking for snow removal. So, we have a little more teeth to the ordinance, for people at least that've parked on one side of the road or the other when they're trying to plow.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna do that, yes. I got screened that on High Street, I can now volunteer my time to move some snow, and, uh, got yelled at by a citizen about, why are we moving this? And why don't we call a tow truck and just have them tow it? They said, well, I get that, but then the bro's gonna pay for the tow. And second, the bro still has to clean up all the snow that's left behind. And third, where's the sign that says, you have to move your vehicle all the time in the street? We tried even on parking on High Street, it doesn't work. Basically, it was, what do you want me to do? So, we're gonna look into something that, okay, after a certain amount of hours, one of our residents has said something about abandoned vehicles, trailers, this, that, what have you. Just because you don't, they, they have a parking spot, put your trailer in your yard, move your truck out back, or, or store it. We have to maintain, maybe in the way I told the guys, if you move it back and forth, it's fine, but, you know, when you choke everything, oh, we can't do this, you know? So, uh, they were happy that I moved the snow, moved their trailer and everything, but then the other resident was pissed that, why don't, why don't you move my snow? Sorry, you got bad neighbors. I don't know what you want me to do, you know, it was a no end situation. So, try and, try and tighten that up, so we can... There was a loophole, they found it, and now we need to close it.
Alright, any more of the code enforcement? Chris?
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, alright, five-year plan for the Burrow building still on here?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can I amend my personnel, uh, report slightly?
Sure.
I, uh, apologize, I neglected to mention that Barb and I and Brett, we looked at the, uh, personnel policy. Uh, i- i- it's not moving quickly, but we are making some progress. And we reached out to a couple of other municipalities to, uh, see what they're doing. Uh, I spoke with our former solicitor, whose, um, suggestion has always been minimize and keep it, you know, keep it simple. Uh, our, our current solicitor, uh, gave us some, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? He, he sent over some that he had for, uh, some other people that he works with. So, you know, we're looking at just how we, you know, how, how much we have to put into it. Uh, obviously, we don't wanna make it any, any more complicated than it has to be. But, uh, I, I forgot to, uh, mention that we are working on this situation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for the update. Did you have anything additional to add about the Sister City project, I think, beyond what the mayor had put in there?
No, she was, uh, we, we spoke about it, we were going to, to, to meet, she said she was going to reach out to them and, and try to get some more information before we actually sat down to, uh, you know, to make an approach. So, there hasn't been, you know, I haven't spoken to her since then, that was right after the last meeting.
Okay.
She's traveling, maybe she traveled there to speak in person.
That's it, she's talking in person. Tell them we said hi. Alright, um, that moves on to the solar project.
Yes.
Floor yours.
So, we have an opportunity here with the community to support energy efficiency and sustainability, sustainable energy products. Recently, the West Penn Sustainable Energy Fund had a grant for a hundred percent no match. And that's been sus- that's actually been submitted. Despite initial concerns regarding time constraints, it got done. I firmly believe the potential benefits of lowering the tax burden through solar energy and energy efficient upgrades to our borough buildings. By embracing these initiatives, we not only aim to save tax dollars, but also reduce our carbon footprint and contribute to the overall well-being of our community. I truly believe this is a win-win for the Jewett taxpayers and the properties. It aligns with goals of promoting energy efficiency and sustainable practices while simultaneously benefiting the community. And I'd like to motion that we move forward with the project focusing on energy savings, sustainability, and environmental responsibility. The installation of solar panels and the utilization of the tax dollars saved will allow us to improve our borough buildings, which have been neglected over the years. It is crucial to ensure that, it is crucial to ensure that these savings are specifically allocated to this project and not added to the general fund for other purposes. And I also kindly request that this entire statement be added to the meeting minutes as a record of energy efficiency tax dollars savings projects presented to the council by documenting our commitment to this project. We can ensure transparency and accountability in our decision-making process. Questions?
I have no questions, I have a statement.
Sure.
So, uh, I have just three points, am I gonna argue with you? Because, I don't know that. First being, I sent you an article, and I understand that I don't get it. I never said we were gonna lease these solar panels. The article spoke to the fact of the failing solar industry in the United States being propped up by the federal government. And that a hundred of these companies have failed, and a hundred more were projected to fail, and two of the largest ones were posting massive losses. So, getting involved with a project of this nature, to me, if we have issues with the panels, be it warranty, parts, et cetera, I think it's something that I, 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 I can't see it being positive. Second, um, both these roofs have flat roofs. The mounting of these, the borough building has been, ten years ago, the library, I can't remember the last time we replaced it, maybe fifteen? Or maybe not since we've been here. So, I don't know how they're gonna mount, but I would assume it's gonna be some drilling and holes through flat roofs and rubber structures, or sitting atop rubber roofs and structures that can cause damage and cause warranty issues with the current roof that we have. So, for that purpose, I will support it. Let alone what the, uh, what the leasing industry has done to some people, I have a point out, and I know you talked about having some, you know, educational purposes. Third, um, and just as important to me, I was elected as a Republican, not a native of Mount Jewett Borough, and I have been for twenty years. This, this resolution that talks about carbon neutral and green energy and sustainability does not jive with anything that my constituents support. This town was built on timber, natural gas, logging, trucking. It, to me, paints Mount Jewett as, as some sort of California town, and my constituents that have put me here for the past few decades don't support that. So, I will not be voting for it. This isn't a debate, and I'm not gonna argue a point with it. That's how I feel, and I want everybody in the constituency to know.
Comments?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm going to speak out of knowledge and experience, but not out of feeling. As a business owner that has worked directly and indirectly with the likes of technical resources, power drilling, Tom Tar Industries in Georgia Pacific, uh, I believe that any resolution supporting a green energy would fly in the face of what these people have tried to do and build in our community and our surrounding area, and I believe it would be an insult to them. And thus, we, uh, I cannot support it, uh, as well. Thank you.
A resolution what bothers me, as far as, you know...
Well, we're not really talking about the resolution here.
Green ed- energy, you know, I mean...
Well, you have to have a resolution before you can move forward with the, the project, am I right?
Not necessarily.
There are two separate resolutions. The one resolution is the one where we would agree to be open to this collaboration and working on any projects that might come through, and we're not committing to anything with that resolution. We're not saying we're open to, um, collaborating with, um, West Penn, what are they called?
Sustainable energy.
Sustainable energy. The second one...
I only have one resolution. I was only given one resolution.
I don't, yeah, that, that personally hasn't written, has it?
This energy one is the only one that's given.
That's the one that you're referring to.
Yeah, but we're not even talking about that yet.
No, but they're...
Is there a resolution for the other one?
No, what he's talking about is his letter, that he wanted everybody to...
Well, the grant was submitted. Um, I don't know if the letter was sent, I know you have letters from other representatives, uh, that supported it. Um, yeah, it's two separate things, maybe it's not a resolution, maybe that's the wrong word.
Well, it was more just showing support.
It was basically us saying that as a council, we agree to be open to collaborations with them. Uh, with West Penn Sustainable Energy, that, the ones that did the passive house. And that we would then, whatever projects might come our way, we would then assess them on a project-by-project basis um, and see if we wanna move forward. So, it wouldn't even necessarily be solar, it could be any number of things, but it is all along the lines of sustainability and energy efficiency and all that kinda stuff. And, and so, that is part one of what Frank was proposing.
That's the letter you wrote.
That's the letter I wrote, which, which we did not submit, as far as I'm aware, uh, because we didn't have a discussion about it here. And, and even the letter clearly said, we're not committing to anything with this.
Nope.
Um, the second part, which is what you guys are talking about as well, is the, uh, resolution that's in the package, and that is more of a statement, formal resolution saying that, that energy efficiency is something that as a borough, uh, we are going to support and push towards.
I would love your shot for that letter had been submitted by you as council president, I didn't know that it had been submitted.
No.
No, I sent it, um, just to kinda show what it was, and, but because I didn't really get any feedback, I'm not comfortable speaking for everyone. Um, and I certainly didn't wanna do that. I was very careful in the wording of that letter to make sure that it was not committing to anything at all. It was just, I, I know that the collaboration in Kane has been beneficial to their community, um, and it got them a lot of attention. And so, I wanted to be open to collaborating with them on something, uh, and kind of opening that door. If they're interested in Mount Jewett, I'm interested in Mount Jewett, I want us to thrive, I want businesses here. Um, if that is a way to make that happen, I wanna hear the ideas that they bring, but obviously, make decisions as a group on what any of those might be. So, I was just trying to open the door, that was my thought.
I'm fine with working with them and seeing what they come up with for energy efficiency towards the building. I don't like the idea of solar panels on the roof of a building, and solar farms on place, and the, out in the field, uh, okay, you know...
Where would you like to put the farm?
You got the ballpark, you got the super pods, you got the borough lot. I'm not gonna support them on the roof, and I'm not gonna support the, uh, resolution that... I'm not gonna support them on the roof, and I'm not gonna support the uh, resolution that, that we're, you know, some sort of.
So you, you would, you would much rather have solar panels up at the ballpark where kids could climb the fence and possibly electrocute.
I'd be more likely to say if the sewer pond got room for them there, they would leave away of anything. I don't mind that space.
Okay.
I will say, I will, I've seen many uh, solar farms in, in communities around the country, and uh, they are always uh, protected with chain link barbed wire, and they have, and they're, they have to be heavily secured. It's not that they're impenetrable, but uh, you know, they can be secured so that they are not going to be vandalized or abused, or hopefully someone electrocuted.
Right. No, and I, and I agree with that, but, but, I mean, that would be, that would be something that would have to come as a proposal, because what, what he, the, the one he has now is a hundred percent paid. Um, obviously, like I said, no decisions have been made, but nobody's talked about a solar farm, at least they haven't at this point.
You've talked about the idea of what they come up with.
Right.
We, we, we'll see energy audit and see what, what they come up with.
And then maybe we, we respond if, if we're open to the idea of, what about a solar farm? And tell us more about it.
One of the neat things about this proposal is there's the two stages. There's the energy audit, and then there's solar panels. If we only wish to do the energy audit, I don't think they'll complain.
Well, I mean, as long as.
Because they've done an energy audit for the Lutheran home in Kane, they've done an energy audit, I believe, for the his- historical society in Kane. Um, they've done solar panels for the radio station, which is a pretty old building, but. Um, and then there's three, I think, I forget what he said, three or four other smaller communities within the area that they've approached. This isn't something that, you know, if we say no, they're gonna get all upset. But what it is, is there's gonna be other communities that are gonna be benefiting from it, and that's gonna be actual news. Because when they get their information, they present their information at different seminars and this, that, and the other thing, and they, they actually bring the towns into focus to these other people. Like you and I had discussed, that passive house was key to how Kane is doing right now. And there are other people, other burrows. Uh, what is it, Balfon? I think actually did an ordinance that they would go solar by 2033.
So with two sides to what you're doing, you have the resolution in here, which, uh, we can put to the side for a moment.
We can put that aside.
To focus on the first thing, which is, um, being open to collaborative projects with West Penn.
Yes.
Uh, and Brett said he would be open to those conversations.
Yes.
And so, to move forward with just that issue right now, is that something, I don't know if we need a motion, or is that something we're comfortable saying we're open to?
We're not sweating it out, we didn't, we didn't do a motion to put in for this grant.
Yeah, we didn't. Really, you don't, you don't really need to do anything until you find out if you're finished, right?
You didn't really need to have a motion to write this grant.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We didn't do that, we put in for it, so.
Well, I, as long as everybody's comfortable, then, then we can send the letter, and we can say we're open to.
Okay, wait, before you do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Have they said anything about wind power? We have more wind here than we do sunshine.
They are solar. They are a subsidiary of First Energy. They're actually uh, backed tremendously by the PUC. Um, but their thing is solar. Their thing is energy efficiency. Their thing is heat pumps. Their, that's their thing. And like, our systems here, they looked at them. They're only a hundred and twenty. Oh, there's no two forty in this building, is there?
Two forty for the uh, in the background.
There is.
And well, place for well.
But they've looked at, they've looked at the actual panels. They didn't see anything wrong with the panels. They've uh, inspected the roof with drones. They haven't seen any issues with the roof. I believe its code says we have to be able to, the slab roof has to handle twenty pounds per square foot? And solar panels weigh between two and four pounds, and then the balance weight. Because all they're doing is sitting on the roof. They're sitting at a ten degree angle. There's no cleaning them off. Anybody that has the idea that you have to clean them off, you're just insane.
I lived in Arizona and you had to.
What about the passive house? They had to get up there and sweep them off.
They haven't told me anything. The only thing I've heard is the solar panels will take care of themselves.
Our solar panels on the sewer pond, somebody has to go out once a year and wash them down.
Well, that's different.
It's still solar energy.
Yeah, but no.
I, I don't, I don't get it.
No.
Uh, President?
Uh, yes, sir.
Um, West Penn Tower used to be a, uh, its own entity, and, and they serviced that for many, many years. I believe they are now a subsidiary of First Energy, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, First Energy, uh, recent, recent years went through some very serious financial upheaval and bankruptcy. And uh, I know this personally because they burnt me for several thousand dollars. Just, just, just throwing that out there. I, I, I'm not warm and fuzzy about anything to do with First Energy. They could put their name over, they could put their name over a stadium, but they couldn't write me a check for what they owed me.
Um, so if I'm understanding, there, thank you for that, Chuck. Was that it? Sorry, I'm gonna cut you off.
My only problem with the solar panels is everybody says energy efficiency environmentally sound, they are not built environmentally sound. It causes this as much damage to the earth to get indeed from the minerals for solar panels as it does that we're going to use, that we're gonna post. I will go, I'm along with going on what they say, but I'm not going, I don't want to do with the solar panels. Well, I'll kind of go, I'll go with Brett was saying.
So, I mean, you're not looking for a commitment on solar panels today, or direct? You're just.
Well, it'd be nice to commit to something, instead of just sit here flopping around.
Commit to see what the.
We're committing to pitches from them, ideas from them.
Well, there is their pitch. It's right there in there.
And the thing is, if, if you wanna, if you're comfortable calling for a vote on whether or not to support solar panels, I'm happy to do it.
Well, it's quite obvious that, um, energy efficiency and tax savings is not in the minds here.
No, it is. I think you did a lot of work, Frank. I was just asking about wind tower, if we had any, anything about wind power, because we have a lot of wind here.
Yeah, we do have a lot of wind, but we get, that would require a whole lot of area.
Okay.
Especially if you got the very large.
Yeah, the turbines.
Yes. And those are the things that actually are not very, are not environmentally friendly.
Alright, so.
Um, solar panels are made out of quartz, glass, aluminum, and that's about it. So as far as being environmentally unfriendly, I wouldn't say that.
Um, right now, we're saying we're willing to work with them to see what they have to offer.
Sure.
Um, I do not see a complete proposal from them. I know that there were some concerns because their paperwork said that they work with 501(c)(3), so we wanted to get that straightened out.
Yes, and it was, and it's, it's actually been stated twice that the paperwork wasn't changed, but what they're doing is they're looking for little projects, is what they're doing.
Before I would commit any, uh, anything to that, I would need to see in writing that it's gonna change from them.
They know we're not a 401(c)(501)(3), they're the ones that sent me the stuff for it.
Right.
When I had the conversation with Joel, I mentioned again that we weren't a 501(c)(501)(3), and he said he didn't care. It wasn't the issue. When Cam was here, Barb was, was there, when he said it that Joel is interested in doing even municipalities because they may not be 501(c)(501)(3), but they're not for profit.
But that's fine, but what I'm saying is I can't sign any paperwork or do anything, get in business with them until that's in writing. Because, just 'cause that's what he wants, I mean, he can push that through whatever board he has to answer to, or whatever the situation is there.
Joel's.
All our ducks have to be in the rough.
That gentleman that day when I said to him, he said, you're not a 501 anything, and I said, no, we're a local municipality.
Yes.
And he said, I'll have to talk to Joel. Is what he said before he left.
Well, he's the one who actually did the grant, at least as far as the, the work part and what the project would consist of. He's the one that actually helped me put it together.
Right. I'm just, for my sake, I would need a clean, comfortable proposal, um, that works in municipalities.
But it is a clean, comfortable proposal. You know, you're, you're hung up on a little word.
Because it's a big one.
No, it's not, really, because whether, you know, they're, they're a private thing, okay? They don't have, just because their paperwork says 501(c), doesn't mean they have to follow that rule, okay? It's that simple. They're looking to expand, they're looking to make people aware, okay?
I just don't want that to fall back on the borough that we are.
I don't see how it would if they provided, they knew all the information.
I'm just expressing my concern.
No, that's fine.
Um, because I, I, we have to be careful. If it's any area they're willing to push into and they're interested in doing it, then I would think they would have no problem um, accommodating that.
No, I don't see them having a problem with it at all. I'm just stating that you're, you're focused on this one little word, just like this one over here is focused on not being into the solar panels on the roof.
It's more, what does that word represent? If they haven't changed it in their paperwork, are they fully ready to work with municipalities?
Well, like I said, there's four, there's three or four others that they're going to.
I'm just not ready yet until I can, it, I have to see it in writing, I've said that before. I have to see it in writing what it is that, that they're proposing.
But you do see it in writing what they're proposing.
Let me really get the energy audit, let me see what they propose.
If we can do that.
It's a good possibility we can do that. But I'm gonna tell you right now, they're gonna want to push for the solar panels.
Push for it, well, and, and once they do that, and then they come, and then it's like, okay, this is the solar panel, here's how much it's gonna, here's the grant, here's how much, here's the installation, the timeline, the whole layout of what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Then we're ready to vote on it.
I'll make a motion, we proceed with the energy audit, provided that they're inclined to do so.
I'll send that motion just for the energy audit.
It's fine.
Um, all those in favor of?
Just a minute.
It's Brett's. Made the motion, Chris seconded, to proceed to look to an energy audit.
Yep.
Take it from there. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that's where we stand on that.
I also furthermore call for a vote on this energy.
Well, that's not a resolution. Uh, that's gonna be a roll call vote, because I, I know.
First, there's the motion, exactly.
I know, but just heads up.
Well.
I already got it down.
How about we just turn around and not worry about the resolution at this point in time?
Well, I don't think that's gonna change. I don't, I really don't think that's, even if we were to find, uh, I mean.
That's fine, you want to have a vote, we'll have a vote. I'll motion that we accept the audit, the resolution. If there's a second, great. If there isn't, then it does.
Well, that's where we stand. Is there a second?
And then it does. So, we'll see what happens with the grant, we'll see what happens with the audit. And I guess we'll actually also see what happens with other communities that actually are accepting this sort of.
Yeah, it'd be great here, whatever, Chuck.
I'm sure they have the data on it already.
Alright, um, well, that shifted us into the new business, and we already took care of the first one of that. Did you have anything additional right now?
Additionally?
No, on this, before I move on.
No.
Okay. So the resolution's ready, initiative, we addressed that, so we have the, oh, we already did the, or kind of. So what's left is public response. Does anybody have anything to say about what we talked about tonight? From out there.
I'd like to, um, I think Frank has done in intensive work on the solar panels, but I really would like to see something on the turbines.
I don't know where we're gonna put it.
They save more energy than the solar panels.
These solar panels are supposed to generate ninety-seven percent, forty-nine thousand kilowatts. We use fifty-four thousand kilowatts.
I, I do think.
That will pay for the speed bikes and electricity, the cars, all of that.
We do. We do get a lot of wind, we have to get the air.
We have to figure out how to do it between buildings here where it comes through, we'd have main.
Oh, then you'd have great ones.
Put it in my yard, it's right there.
That would be great.
We need building on Main Street.
That's true.
We got one.
We'll put it right in the middle of Main Street, no problem.
I'll look and see if I can find.
Yeah, 'cause the wind power is actually better than solar, and it's not to this ma- you know.
Oh, no! Everybody's got their own feelings on what happens.
Right.
But see, I'm looking at this with
Right.
truly open eyes and saying,
Right.
these people know more than me.
Well, I, see, I'm, yeah.
You have a building right there in Kane. They went energy efficient all the way.
Right, on that one building.
Yes.
Okay, so what, our wind power, we have the wind, would be for everybody here. And I think we need to check into that. You've done really good extensive studies on that. And I would like to see what comes up with wind power.
I'll look and see what I can find.
And I think it would be, you know, to compare the two.
I'll become a nut, because I'll be getting every one of these salesmen contacted and wanting to lease. I'm serious. I called places and they were literally, um, especially if I turned around and said, well, you know, that thirty percent's not gonna do me a whole lot of good. Oh, they will lease, and you end up spending sixty, seventy thousand dollars on something that's supposed to be thirsty.
Right, alright.
And on top of it, they submit for the federal funds.
Anything from out there?
Make a motion for a term.
Yes, sir?
Make a term.
There you go.
Do you have a term?
Brett, did you make a motion to a term?
I did make a motion to a term.
Chris seconded the motion to a term. All those in favor? Opposed? I don't care, we're not here.